Town of Woodbridge Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Today is Monday, April 17th, close to 7:30. What I'd like to do first, if it's okay with everyone, I would like to start with a moment of silence first before we move on into our business. A moment of silence for a wonderful individual from the Town of Woodbridge, Edie Lockyer. We have Hank, Chris, myself, and we have three alternates, and we need to seat two alternates. And at the last meeting, Arlene, you were excused. Would you like to sit for this?
Sure.
Thank you. Would you like to sit?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And you're going to stay and listen?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, this evening, we are listening to our hearing. It was published in the New Haven Register. I'm just going to read the legal advertisement. It was published twice, on Thursday, March 30th, and Thursday, April 6th. Legal notice is hereby given. Public hearing to be held by the Woodbridge Zoning Board of Appeals in the central meeting room of the Woodbridge Town Hall here at Meeting House Lane. This is a continuation of our original meeting that was called Monday, April 10th. The applicant is James and Diane Urbano, 52 North Pease Road, relative to a proposed shed variance, Section 3.1.3 Table General Bulk Regulations, Column 6, whereby a 70-foot, five-foot front yard setback is required, and a 10-foot setback for a variance of 65 feet. In Section 6.2.1, where road center line setback of 100 feet is required, a setback of 35 foot for a variance of 65. File for the foregoing application and available for your review to Town Hall Land Use Office and by myself. Some thank yous. Okay. You want to speak to us? Please. Arlene, state your name, not that we don't know who you are.
James Urbano, 52 North Pease Road.
Andrea Urbano, 52 North Pease Road.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to start with what Chris just handed me, which was a photo of a machine at 52 North Pease Road with a question appended to it by my neighbor who's at the furthest point from my house. I'd like to explain that. I wouldn't be so presumptuous as to expect an approval tonight and have a machine on site to start digging tomorrow. Anybody familiar with the farm knows that there was a hedge row of invasives and scrub along Cornfield Lane, which I had removed a couple of months ago. And the stubs needed to be removed so the area could be regraded, to be suitable for seed, and that's what that machine did. It's waiting for the soil to dry so it can be backladed, but that's the reason for a machine there, not because I presumed to start any work. As an introduction, I'd like to start with three pieces that were not part of the original, not submitted with my application, which I would like to enter into the record today. So, one includes a couple of references from the Connecticut Farm Bureau, and it includes Connecticut's State Definition of Agriculture and Farming, and it points to the Connecticut General Statute's Section 1-1Q. The statute allows for the activities associated with the maintenance and management of a farm. Simple as that. It goes on to point to the importance of respecting local zoning regulations, but there are also guidelines suggested, given the preference the State of Connecticut has for farming. So, the definition, zoning regulations, here's a reference. "Zoning regulations establish a procedure for application and review of proposed activity," what I have in my application, "and set performance standards, determine whether land uses could be, would be harmonious with the overall plan of conservation and development." That's key here. So, concerning the conservation plan, our plan, the Woodbridge Plan of Conservation and Development, a municipality's plan of conservation and development is the foundation for setting policies, goals, and standards for the town, which helps guide local planning and local zoning regulations. So, I have, which I'm going to leave here, Planning for Agriculture: A Guide for Connecticut Municipalities. This was published, this is the 2012 edition. It was published by the American Farmland Trust and our local or regional planning authority, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Credits are given to, among others, the Yale School of Forestry, bear with me, the American Farmland Trust, the Connecticut Chapter of American Planning Association, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, the Connecticut Farm Bureau, the Connecticut Farmland Trust, the Farm Service Agency, various towns, University of Connecticut, and the United States Department of Agriculture, its Natural Resources and Conservation Service. So, I'm going to give this to Chris at the end of this little presentation. So, that planning guide, I've taken a couple of excerpts. There's a definition of what is farming. "A farm includes farm and accessory buildings, nurseries, orchards, and so on. The definition does not establish a size threshold for farms or an income level for agricultural operations." I'm making these citations because they're pertinent to what I'll be referring to in my application. There's a reference to, and a recommendation to municipalities regarding agricultural structures. "Flexibility in regulations governing agricultural structures is another area where towns can be supportive of agriculture. Structures needed for farming operations present challenges to traditional regulations as they are often unlike other commercial buildings." Then, further, "When addressing farm structures, agricultural buildings, and setbacks," this is page 39, "is important to provide flexibility that balances best practices, best practices, and addresses market needs for farm." So, this is an excerpt from the guide, which I'll be giving each of you a copy of. Then, lastly, as part of the introduction, these are the approved minutes of the Woodbridge Town Plan and Zoning Commission, its regular meeting of October 7, 2013. It discusses amendments to the Town Plan of Conservation and Development, which I just referred to. Amendments related to farmland, a farmland preservation program to be approved by the Town of Woodbridge. So, it was considered on that evening. There are a number, I have a copy of this for everyone, there are a number of supporting documents and references to support, including comments dated 2013 September 12 from Geraldine Shaw, clerk to the Woodbridge Port of Selectment, which endorsed the proposed amendment to the TPCD. So, one of the supporting letters, I'm taking a brief excerpt from it, I'd like to read. This was addressed to the TPNZ in 2013, roughly three and a half years ago, by the Commissioner of Connecticut Department of Agriculture, Steve Ravitsky. He's still Commissioner. He's stating to the commission, "Codifying your town's commitment of farmland preservation would be a strong statement that the community sees agriculture as enhancing Woodbridge's quality of life." That's important, an important consideration. "We know that farms represent more than simply open space. While farms offer a variety of open space benefits, there are also local businesses that provide local jobs, products, and tax revenue. In addition, studies show that farmland requires proportionally less in municipal support services as compared to other competing uses of land. I am pleased to offer my strong support to the inclusion of a farmland preservation plan in the Woodbridge Town Plan and urge your consideration in moving this forward." So, that evening, by unanimous vote, the town's TPNZ made effective an amendment to the Town Plan of Conservation and Development as of November 6, 2013. So, we have, in effect, as part of our Town Plan of Conservation and Development, a farmland preservation plan. So, should I pass these out now or later? At the end? If you want.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Do you want to hand?
Take a minute.
There's this one batch.
What's that?
That's one.
Sure. Let me come here.
Thank you.
One more, two more?
Terry's not going to need a set.
What's that?
Terry will need a set.
So, if I can go to the application itself, I'd like to walk through the attachments. The letter from Betsy Quist just notices the fact that the land is classified as farmland. Attachment 1 is the inventory of plants. The map shows about 100 plants as of 2015. As of today, it's 194 plants in six and a half rows. The seventh row was started. If anyone is interested, they're mostly blueberry, mid, early and late, black raspberry, red raspberry, gooseberry, elderberry. Last year, Andrea manned, who's my partner, as I said, in this, manned the farmers' market at the Town of Woodbridge weekly through the summer, her first year of production. And though the quantities weren't huge, she sold out daily. There's a real market for organic berries.
Local berries, local and organic berries, yes. High demand.
So, we're satisfying the public good. It's not for the money, believe me. I included a statement that Cornfield Lane is a dead-end street that sees little traffic that evoked the ire of that neighbor down the road, and I regret including that statement. But the fact is, what I meant is a quiet street. Not that it being a dead-end street is an excuse to do something that would lower property values, as that neighbor thought. The shed location, as I propose it, assures the availability of prime farmland for the orderly expansion of the berry rows in the future. Those rows started as close to Cornfield as I could go. That's the east-west access of the land, which maximizes southern exposure. That's the recommended best practice for berries. The shed location, and this is important, it's really a barn. The barn location would provide screening. If you've driven by there, you'll see piles of woodchips, which I use for wheat suppression, and some topsoil. The building would hide all that, I think in deference to my neighbors. So, that's one important reason for locating it there. It's better than a fence, it'd be much more attractive than a fence, much more practical in the sense that it preserves farmland and is efficient. And as I noted, the shed architecture would be faithful to a New England barn type that's common in the area. Do I need to cite the variances? I do, okay. So, I'm looking for a variance of Section 3.1.3 of the General Bulk Regulations, Column 6, minimum front yard. And because it's a corner lot, that side yard, which I consider to be a side yard in practical terms, is my second front yard. If it was a side yard, the variance would only be for five feet, but nonetheless, it's seen as a front yard. So, I'm looking for a 10-foot setback for a variance of 65 feet for the construction of a farm storage shed. Also, variance of Section 6.2.1, one, front yard setback from the road center line. Cornfield Lane is a Class C road. The required setback from the road center line is 75 feet plus 25 feet for a total of 100 feet. With the shed proposed to be 10-foot off the property line and 35 feet off the road center line, the variance requested is 65 feet. Every, we'll get to the quality of the soils later in this. Part of a rationale, a justification for locating the shed where it is, is to save that prime farmland for the orderly growth of the farm over time. So, I ask to describe in detail the exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship which results from literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance and state how this condition is peculiar to 52 North Pease Road and not applicable to the area as a whole. I believe the imposition of a residential a setback requirement on a farming use causes exceptional difficulty and unusual hardship for the following reasons. North Pease Farm, like the majority of new farms in Connecticut, C attachment 3, has a relatively small land area. It can be commercially viable on that small land base because of the soil quality and its suitability for high-value crop production. Fruit, berries, and related, fruit and berries are considered to be high-value crops. Using fertile land, what could be productive land, for unnecessary drives, access, and staging would impair the expansion, create inefficiencies, and therefore create hardship by threatening the success of the farm. So, if this barn was located 100 feet off the street line, that would mean a driveway, 20-foot driveway, 100 feet long, plus a staging area, far removed from where the materials are needed, creating inefficiency. It's just not a best practice. Best practice is to locate the barn close to where the need is. The arable land of North Pease Farm is classified as prime farmland soils by the NRCS, the Natural Resources and Conservation Service. The soil is a natural resource, as stated in our farmland preservation plan in our own town zoning ordinance and P O C D. Soil should be concerned and utilized for maximum productivity. And you can see the classifications in the NRC farmland soils maps, which I've attached, attachment 4. So, another reason it's a hardship. The Woodbridge Town Plan, I'm sorry, it's point C, the State of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 12, 107A, which is titled Declaration of Policy, states it is hereby declared that it is in the public interest to encourage the preservation of farmland, forest land, open-spaced land, and maritime heritage land in order to maintain a readily source of food and farm products close to the metropolitan areas of our state. There's a great need for this stuff, close by. My argument, hardship will result if a shed located according to residential standards causes the loss of farmland, the loss of efficiency, and the loss of productivity. D, our own Town Plan of Conservation and Development states that our town has nearly 3,600 acres of farmland soils that are an irreplaceable asset. Further, the Town Plan states in its near-term agenda that we need to preserve farmland, fertile soils, and agribusiness. It states that Woodbridge should develop policies and incentives to encourage preservation of operating and historic farms to avoid further development of prime farmland soils. So, this land could have been occupied by a house, and it's not. I believe it's there serving the public good. Finally, and like state policy, the Town Plan of Conservation and Development states it is hereby declared that it is in the public interest to encourage the preservation of farmland, forest land, open-spaced land, and maritime heritage land in order to maintain a readily available source of food products. Imposing, I believe, a residential setback standard would interfere, as I've stated previously, with efficiency, waste prime farmland, and counters the Town Plan. E, I note that in our zoning regulations, Woodbridge already provides an exception for farm accessory buildings. Any structure, that's attachment 9, "Any structure being used on a farm for a customary farm purpose shall not be limited in size or height." So, that's a dispensation for farms. I'm not asking for dispensation in size or height. I simply use this as an example of an exception being made to encourage and support farming in our town. So, my conclusion, imposition of the 75-foot front setback would force the loss of prime farmland for unnecessarily long driveway and staging area. Shed location that is remote from the area that it will support causes hardship, the hardship of inefficiency and unnecessary labor. The imposition of residential setbacks on a farming use contradicts the state's declaration of policy in the farmland preservation and agribusiness goals of the Woodbridge Town Plan of Conservation and Development. And I have a few photos that I'll leave with Chris that shows the planting area where the barn would go. Sugar maple trees. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have a lot of questions. I don't know if anybody else wants to, I have a lot of questions.
Go ahead.
You think? I don't, I, um, this is a learning experience for all of us, I think. Okay? I don't think any of us are in a position to understand, well, we do understand, we just need to get all our ducks in a row.
Sure.
So, attachment 3 is a letter from our town assessor. So, the first question I have is, you're referencing the fact that it's farmland classification.
Yes.
That's from an assessor's perspective.
It's also from the perspective of the United States Department of Agriculture, which has sponsored soil assessment maps for the entire state of Connecticut, including Woodbridge. And the soils are mapped, soil types are mapped, and the prime farmland soils are mapped and shown in a different attachment. And North Pease Road is in that area.
Right. But help me to connect the dots.
Sure.
As it relates to the assessor's identification as farmland and farmland soils map as it relates to the zoning regulations in Woodbridge. I'm just having, I-
Well, that just helped you understand that it's farmland. It's classified as farmland by the town, and it's designated as farmland by the state. So, one reinforces the other. I proceeded in a fashion connecting the dots as well. If it wasn't recognized by the town as farmland, I would not have gotten into it as further, as deeply as I am. I would not have applied to the State of Connecticut for a tax permit for North Pease Farm, which I did. So, my investments have, in a linear fashion, have followed. That should make sense.
Five questions.
Yes, sir.
You have an existing house?
Yes.
How do you get the house?
Driveway.
Where's the driveway?
In front of the house.
Okay. And where across from the house is?
On North Pease.
On North.
On North Pease, okay.
No, 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 ma'am, I'm sorry, Arlene. The driveway's on Cornfield Lane.
Oh, it's on Cornfield.
So, the driveway's already on Cornfield Lane?
Yes.
And the way this map is drawn by the existing house, there's a dotted line, and those are the setback, and I presume you're not going to farm right up to the house?
I already am farming on that front acre and a half inhabited since I moved in.
Which front acre and a half?
The acre and a half that the house sits on.
Okay.
There are, if you had looked at the application, in the key of plantings, there are something like 40 fruit trees planted in that, in the front area, as well as berry plants.
But help me to connect the dots as it relates to the assessor's identification as farmland and farmland soils map as it relates to the zoning regulations in Woodbridge. I'm just having, I...
Well, that just helped you understand that it's farmland. It's classified as farmland by the town, and it's designated as farmland by the state. So one reinforces the other. I proceeded in a fashion connecting the dots as well. If it wasn't recognized by the town as farmland, I would not have gotten into it as further, as deeply as I am. I would not have applied to the State of Connecticut for a tax permit for North Peace Farm, which I did. So my investments in a linear fashion have followed. That should make sense.
Five questions.
Yes, sir.
You have an existing house?
Yes.
How did you get the house?
Driveway.
Where's the driveway?
In front of the house.
Okay. And the front of the house is?
On North Peace.
On North.
On North Peace, okay.
No, 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 ma'am, I'm sorry, Arlene. The driveway's on Cornfield Lane.
Oh, it's on Cornfield.
So the driveway's already on Cornfield Lane?
Yes.
And the way this map is drawn by the existing house, there's a dotted line, and those are the setback, and I presume you're not going to farm right up to the house?
I already am farming on that front acre and a half inhabited since I moved in.
Which front acre and a half?
The acre and a half that the house sits on.
Okay.
There are, if you had looked at the application in the key of plantings, there are something like 40 fruit trees planted in that, in the front area, as well as berry plants.
But those behind the house or in front of the house?
In front of the house.
In front of.
And what's behind the house?
The land we're talking about, the acre and a half that's planted with berries.
Can I?
I guess what I'm kind of struggling with, in all cases, for the Zoning Board of Appeal, we try to minimize intrusions on zoning, okay?
Yes.
And try to minimize those kinds of things.
Yes.
And if I look at all this acreage, to put a 320-square-foot shed, it seems like there's lots of other areas it could go without violating our zoning laws.
Well, my daughter would like to speak. If she could answer, I'll follow up.
Sure. So you make a good point. There is available space, unoccupied, by crops presently. However, the point we're making is that where that space is available is very fertile soil with huge production potential for crops. So by putting that square footage of infrastructure in that land, it would take away our ability to expand our production, which is the goal of our farm, to continue to increase the need, the public good, to meet the public's needs. And so one reason is to not take away fertile land, but to...
And so the spot where this is not fertile?
Where the house is?
That corner.
It is.
So what difference does it make where you take away fertile land?
That's the minimum, that allows for the absolute minimum loss of fertile land. I need to build it. I need to support the plants that I've invested in already, and I need it in proximity to those plantings. So located there, say, minimizes the loss of fertile land, one. Two, it shields the messiness of the soils piled and the woodchips used to keep the weeds down. It hides from view, from the street, from my neighbors, the staging area, that's called the staging area. And best practices, you're a physician, I think you use references when you want to understand a disease or a problem, and you use that authority to govern your actions. I've used a number of authorities, including Stories. Stories is an author dealing with organic fruit and berry production. And best practices are outlined in that reference, in that authority, and I followed it. And it makes good sense. Makes good sense from an aesthetic point of view, in that I shield the messiness from my neighbors. It makes absolute sense in terms of efficiency, being able to store the bird nets, the posts, the organic fertilizers, the tractor, all of the tools necessary to support the plantings in close proximity to where they're used and needed. So putting that someplace else doesn't accomplish that at all.
Additionally, locating the shed there reduces soil compaction, which is another point of our preservation. If we had the shed located in a more, you know, in one of those open spaces you were previously referencing, an access road, you know, the tractor would then have to go all the way out to that shed, and back, and out, and back, and out, and back, every time we needed to get supplies or store things. And soil compaction degrades soil over time and would, over the long term, degrade productivity, fertility of the soil.
Adri, by the way, is a manager at Jones Family Farm in Shelton. She has two degrees in agriculture and in forestry, was recently published in what? Not that it matters, but it's, speaking of authorities, what were you publishing?
The Journal, he's a proud father, the Journal of Forest Ecology and Management.
Very nice.
Thank you.
You're proud too.
So that's another component of the preservation, is trying to minimize our soil compaction.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where is your existing driveway now?
It is.
Of Cornfield.
Can I show you on that map?
Yeah.
Existing driveway is somewhere in here. That's the garage and the turnaround.
So it goes all the way?
Yeah, way across the front. There are four rows of fruit trees from the corner back. There are two more rows of fruit trees here, and that, oops, that planning plan shows you the location. My map is color coded.
So your driveway is in between?
Right there. Yep. I thought you said here.
Yeah, that's the...
Well, it kind of loops around.
Okay, so that's the driveway.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is a turnaround?
Yeah. Yeah. So how do you, where do you have access? Where do you keep your tractors and things now?
Right now, it's in the open under a tree. Here, here's some there. There's a 20-foot driveway, shed would be here, and the tractor...
So why put in another driver? Why wouldn't you have the shed here?
Because all of, right now, these rows in 2016 were extended. There are seven rows of plantings here.
Yeah, but these are all the plantings, and it makes, to me, it makes no sense to have it by the driveway that you already have.
Yeah, but I have to drive from there to here.
Oh, to the, but then the converse is also true. If the shed is here, you have to drive from here to here. So to me, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, it should make sense because the same setback rule that you're talking about would push the shed...
Jim, excuse me. All the members need to see what you're talking about. They want to...
I don't do that.
Well, you have to do...
How about this?
No, because it's too... Our eyes aren't that good. This map may be a little better than I have. Since it's, so these are, you have this...
I mean, you could even put the shed over here.
Right.
We have, there's a tree there. But again, so we have light, two light posts there. There's a mature tree here. And so they're saying we can put the shed there.
But that doesn't solve the problem.
Well, we're not treating it as farm. That's what was my point of connecting it. We're talking about this as just a regular old application.
Well, but the rest of the area around it is being impacted.
Right. So we have, that's correct. And the four immediate neighbors, and one of the upper neighbors, five neighbors, have submitted letters of support. The person most affected, you have his letter of support. Lou Bruni, Helen Roxanne Smollett, the Bergs, and Joe Ross, Aldana Noto, and Philip Dr. Noto, who wants to hear. All of the immediate neighbors support this. No issue whatsoever. In fact, they, a couple of them underscored the quality of life benefit of having a farm here rather than another house.
But this doesn't take away the farm. Right, the farm exists, period.
Sure. Okay.
The farm exists. Indeed, it does. However, putting something here...
Wait, 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 excuse me. One person at a time. We have a commissioner who's speaking. Please let him finish.
No, anyway, so that was my only point, is no one's taking away the farm. So all the things that you're saying about the goodness for the community, they still exist. They're not changed. The only thing that's going to change is the position of this, which is in violation of zoning. And we don't like to increase the violations of zoning, especially with where it doesn't have to be increased, when there's lots of other opportunities to put the same structure somewhere else on this huge piece of property. The distance from here to here is the same distance as from here to there. So I still come out and say, okay.
First, the sun rises in the east, as you know. So I get morning sun, a clear shot of sun, which a building here would obstruct, not desirable.
Well, it's not right on it.
But you have a tree there already.
We have a deciduous tree, so it's seasonal, it's seasonally...
But it's not...
Matters.
You don't grow in the winter.
Oh, but sunlight matters year round for farmers and for crops.
What about, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
A reason for locating it here is shielding the burrow piles, the woodchips, the soil...
But you could also put those there.
No, 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 that, it's just, see, you're making suggestions that are impractical, and in some ways, you're making suggestions that don't work. They hide, they're hidden in this corner. You're asking to put a messy area in the middle of the operation, it's just...
How are you going to get to the shed with your equipment?
There's a driveway right here.
Right, so you're going to come down the street?
No, well, all I need to do is get out of here, there's a lane in between each bank, each row of...
A tractor row.
In between each raised bed, so I would enter from the west side. These are continuous rows now, which shows up on this map. So these are continuous rows, and in fact, this one is planted now. So seven and a half rows. The tractor can go down in the space in between each, minimizing compaction. These are pathways, so compaction is not a factor there. Again, the shed shields from my neighbors, in particular, my neighbor across the street. I don't want to create a mess for him.
No, but putting it further, I mean, I'm not an arborist, I'm not an agriculturalist, I don't know, but it just...
Jim, where's everything held? Where do you guys store everything right now?
I have a shed, yeah, I have a shed here, and a tool shed here.
So why not expand on that?
Because driving the tractor from here to there just is inefficient, impractical, compact soils.
Well, you said there's a...
You want the traveling to be an absolute minimum. I'm sorry.
You said there was a driveway or an opening right here.
Correct, there is.
Correct. So if you had...
It has to go from here all the way over to there, right?
No, but if you build a shed right here...
Say that again, Arlene.
Hold on, what's that? If you build a shed right here, you're going to take the tractor, and you could take it down this way, and then over.
However, our neighbors voiced that they do not want an increase of traffic on the road. And that was one thing we had to make clear, that the shed would not become a farm stand or anything like that. So, and really, tractors are slow, and we feel like that would inconvenience our neighbors and use more fuel and kind of inconvenience us as well.
Can you move it this way a little more, or no?
What that does...
So you're lessening the...
It moves, right now, the staging area is here, at the end of all the banks, the rows. So you're pushing those piles further away, wasting more soil. What...
I'm just saying it's a 65-foot variance versus maybe a 30-foot variance, you know.
I mean, just further back instead of right across.
Just further back, and put the piles on where the building is.
Put the piles on the other side, in my neighbor's view.
But then we have to maneuver a tractor carrying all that mulch around a building, which doesn't really...
Dancing around that.
But what about, why can't you put the mulch over here?
We have, I don't know if they're pictured here, but we do have vines, we have vines going back there. Are they pictured here?
You need to go back to this. This is all planted.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the dam.
These are three rows of grapes, two 150-foot rows, so they occupy that space.
So your intention is to just farm here and sell at the...
Farmer's markets? Or also distribute to some local CSAs, potentially. But no, no, it will not be a pick-your-own. The intention is not to bring people to the land, it's to bring the crops to the people.
You should just note for the record that under the zoning regulations, to have a farm stand, they need five acres of land.
Yeah.
That's good to know, thank you.
They do not have five acres.
Okay, thank you. It's not a farm according to regulations.
It is not a farm under our current zoning regulations.
Okay, got it, thank you. It's, if you go to, so, that was my point. It's not a farm according to the zoning...
Yeah.
For this purpose.
Sure.
Under, they have to consider this under zoning.
No, I understand that.
And under zoning, it does not constitute a farm. And they also have to consider that whatever they vary, whatever they grant, stays in perpetuity with the land.
Correct.
And if the land changes and is no longer a farm, you sell, whatever happens, that structure stays there for whoever else wishes to use it, and it sets a precedent for whoever else would be...
It's not zoned as a farm.
Who might have a structure that close to a...
It's an assessed, this section is assessed as a farm, you might have the soils as a farm, but it's not zoned as a farm.
Accept that.
It's not.
Well, let me add to what Chris said. If you go to the zoning regulations, farms are permitted in residence A zones. So if...
And it is a farm there, five acres.
But what you're asking is for variance within the zoning regulations.
This is a house, this is a piece of property.
So are you going to disregard the amendment to the zoning regulations that gives, excuse me, that gives preference to farmland preservation? That gives preference to support, wait, excuse me, that recognizes smaller farms? I mean, I was on the Conservation Commission for 12 years, from 2001 to 2013, and actually I was the lead on pushing the farmland preservation plan through because it allowed our town to qualify for grants it couldn't otherwise get. In fact, we're working toward and hopefully realizing one for 902 Baldwin Road in Woodbridge. The State of Connecticut in its declaration of policy doesn't recognize the distinction. I know Woodbridge is local control, I understand that, and I respect that. The State of Connecticut doesn't recognize any restriction on size. You could have on a half-acre beehives, which contribute to the local economy, which are important and vital, on a half-acre of land. Any number of farming activities, high-value farming activities can be had on less than five acres. One more thing, Woodbridge was a dairy town, and I could understand the reason for a five-acre minimum because cows are messy, steers are messy, manure and such, and I could understand the reason for a five-acre requirement. We need to move forward. Most of this, as you saw from what I attached from the State of Connecticut, most farms now are under, most new farms in Connecticut, and we are the number-one state in New England gaining farms in number. Most are small farms. A lot of them are under five acres, and that's a fact.
Well, the remedy for that is not us. The remedy for that is zoning, not the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Well, the remedy is already in our Town Plan of Conservation and Development.
Then if that weren't true, you wouldn't need to be here.
Yeah.
Let Chris talk, let Chris talk. Let me explain one difference, because you can't mix the two things. You have a Town Plan of Conservation and Development, and you have your zoning regs. What you are here to do is to vary the zoning regulations. The Town Plan is exactly that. It's a plan that lays out where the town wishes to go in the next however many years, and at the end of it makes recommendations for how it can achieve those goals. While that Town Plan does indeed recognize that this is something that the town would like to do, it has not yet taken the step to either modify its zoning regulations to accommodate that, or to do whatever else it may wish to do to do that. So the big step, because when you adopt changes in your zoning regulations, you have to reference to the fact that in your Town Plan, this is something that you envision. So the first step is to put it in a Town Plan so that it's there, so that you can say, we're doing this reg because our town in its plan says this is something that we wish to do. And then you can go from there. We also have to cite to the state plan, and so on and so forth. It's the first step. We have not, as a town, yet taken the second step, whatever that may be, to take that and other recommendations that are in the plan to heart and put it in place in some more viable manner. In this case, it would be probably a change to the zoning regs to possibly downsize the size of what a farm might be considered to be, or whatever it would be. But under our current regs, which is what you have to work with, our definition of a farm is five acres. Our definition of an accessory building exempts for farms the height and size, probably, again, dealing back with those old dairy farms where you had silos for, you know, corn silage and whatnot. But that's what we have to work with, so, sorry.
One of my questions was, is there anything unique about this property that would allow us to do something different than the normal? that would allow us to do something different than the normal zoning?
I mean, typically, you're not looking at a use, you're looking at a hardship of land. So, typically, it's supposed to be something unique to the land, like wetlands, or, or steep slopes, that don't allow something to be positioned where it is. Because of ledge, something like that. Something that's unique, that doesn't allow, or is a hardship to, you know, bring that reg for, or that requirement forward. The, if there is a problem, the problem that you always have to look at, and, and you've had this case before, where you've had people who are special needs, where they may have a need for something because it's their special need. But as soon as that need leaves, as soon as those people leave, you then granted a variance that stays with the land. Because the variance always runs with the land. And that's the hardest consideration that you, you may have to make. It's a very difficult consideration to have to make. But, that's the reality of what's out there.
So, is there anything with this land that would cause the hardship?
I can't tell you, you hear that.
Chris, if, you said ledge, or wetland would be hardship?
Those are types of hardships. Quite honestly, in the state of Connecticut, the, the goal is, is not to issue variances.
Okay, understood, that you described two hardships relative to the land. So, if ledge and wetlands would be a hardship, why wouldn't the maintenance or preservation of prime farmland soils be a hardship?
Well, it's not a farm, number one. Number two, there's other places...
It's not true.
We understand it's not five acres, but...
Number two, you said, you started off in the very beginning by saying, "You're not doing this for finances, you're not doing this to make money, but kind of a hobby."
This is retirement, so it, it...
That's not what he said. What he said was, "I'm not trying, I'm not doing this to make..."
I have a love of farming, I do, I have a love of the land.
That's absolutely spectacular.
And, so, what, my point was, you can't make a living off it. I was able to pay my daughter with the proceeds of the sale, so it works in that respect. There are no, there, there are benefits beyond, that doesn't mean it's not a business. That doesn't mean it's not a, a commercial operation. And I read you the citation, "In the eyes of the state of Connecticut, where the income is not a governing factor in determining whether it's a farm or not, and the acreage is not a determining factor as to whether it's a farm or not." So, if you don't defer to the state guidance on this, then that's your choice, not mine. And I regret that.
Well, the zoning regulations go by, which is what we're obligated to go by. And if we think the zoning regulations need to be changed, then this is not the venue to do it.
We think, I think your presentation was commendable, and thorough, and everything. But in terms of what we have to consider, I don't, you know, I think we'll have to discuss whether or not we think it meets the criteria for variance.
Right, and is there more information that would be helpful to us to further discuss?
What's your opinion of the state's declaration of policy, Connecticut general statute?
That it's a declaration of policy. And that if the zoning board decides to change zoning regulations based on that, that's, that's something for them to consider, but it's not grounds for a deal.
And our own farmland preservation program is something that does not have any bearing on your decision?
Right. We are here, we have a decision to make about whether or not there is grounds to appeal the existing regulations. And that is based on a hardship of the land. Now, we can argue whether or not the arable land is considerable, considered a hardship, and that's probably something that we need to consider, is part of our discussion. However, when it comes to what the rules are, it's pretty straightforward. We're an appellate body. There's rules, you have to present a good reason for that rules. We have heard your presentation. If there is other information that we should consider as we decide whether or not to grant a variance, let us know. Otherwise, I think we've probably got the information we need.
Jimmy referenced your neighbors directly across the street and directly behind your property.
Yes.
Had submitted letters of support.
Yes.
They're not in our packet.
Yes, they are.
They're not in my packet, then. I had, I had, I didn't get the letter, so...
There's letters that were in front of you today. Yeah, they're, they're also in the packet of apologies, please, in time for the...
Yep, I got that one, I got one, I got that one, yep. So, I got two.
That's all we have.
But there was nothing from Chris Bruni, nothing from Smullen, nothing from...
Really?
Yeah, I just had...
Email goes to, to Chris.
I've copied what you gave me, you got it.
What we just got today.
I have Russ.
I have...
I have this one.
No, no.
Russ, no.
Just from Lou Bruni?
Russ. I have Neely, Nodo, Russ.
Yeah.
You don't have any...
I don't have one either.
No, you did not, you know.
From Lou Bruni?
No.
I copied whatever you gave me in that packet.
Okay, so, there's a letter, support from Lou Bruni of Six Cornfield Lane. We have one from Alba and Nodo at 12 Penray Road. From Tom Neely, had sent a letter posing the, the location. After we talked, and he saw the conditions, he changed his opinion. And he wrote to Chris, "I've been talking with Jim Roberto, I no longer oppose his request."
I didn't see that.
That's, that was dated April 4. Then, there was two more.
Let me make copies of it.
Thanks, Chris.
From Little Bird and Joseph Ross, 56 Northeast Road.
Jim, why don't you just let me make copies, and I can give it to all?
And from Carol and Roxanne Small.
Is it part of the record?
Any further questions?
The farm is completely organic?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the benefits of having the shed there, and not expanding our crops there, is so our crops don't get exposure to emissions from vehicles, or anything like that. So, it actually protects our crops, makes the fruit more viable, healthier for the consumer, and safer for us as harvesters, working the tractor. We don't have to be on the road, bending over, weeding, or anything like that. So, I think that might be an important thing to consider as well.
Do we take these?
Yep. Somebody in the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's someone in the audience. Jim and, and daughter, do you have anything more?
That's your guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything for the day?
Can we stay to hear the discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
Closing the hearing, please.
Yes. You're both closing, right?
We're closing, yeah.
Yes.
Tough one.
Okay.
How do you do that?
Me.
We formally closing now.
Yeah, so that we can discuss it.
Start discussing.
I don't think there's much to discuss, I think there's lots of places to put the shed. I'm not convinced that 320 square feet of land, out of more than, three acres, five acres, not, not three acres.
Three acres.
An acre, as I recall, is 42,000 square feet. So, that's 120,000 square feet. 320 out of 120,000, small number, so...
You're leaving out the...
The hearing is...
Okay, we're done, this is, we're discussing it. So, I, you know, and then, and then we also heard that there was a tree there. So, if you, that doesn't, you can't grow anything except the tree where the tree is. So, if it's really that important to, to preserve number of square feet of farmland, take the tree down and build the shed there. I, I just don't see enough of a reason to, to grant the variance for our zoning rules in this particular case. I don't see a hardship in the land that can't be easily squared away. So, that's...
It's flat land, it's not on a slope, it's, there's no ledge, it's perfect soil. It just seems like it should be able to be built within the setback.
And I think, you know, Chris made an important point, which is one we always wrestle with, is that the, once the variance is granted, it's there.
Yeah.
And so, even though these particular neighbors may not object, there may be a future neighbor that does. And we can't predict how that's gonna go. That's why we have zoning rules and regulations to protect homeowners in terms of things which are built, and, and, I mean, as is true, from reading the, the zoning laws and reading what the, the zoning board of appeals are supposed to do, you know, zone, variances are supposed to be rare, extremely rare, and not granted just near the middle. Because otherwise, if they're granted all the time, then you've just wiped out zoning. There is no, there is no zoning, because everything is a hardship. So, I think that we have to think carefully about these things, because of the precedent which is set. Anyway, so that's my opinion.
I think this particular application is kind of ahead of the curve for how our town should be looking at small farms.
Yes.
Yes.
And, I understand what they're trying to do here, and I commend what they're trying to do here.
I agree.
But, the, the shed, as we said, will be here, as long as that anybody who owns this property wants a shed right on the road, whether it's farmed or not, and that's the issue. It really needs to be addressed by Town Plan and Zoning. How do we, how does Town Plan and Zoning look at small farms, rather than larger farms? And I think they really need to look at something like this, as a kind of a case study on how to modify the zoning regulations to deal with 21st century farming versus 19th century farming.
Right. So, do we talk to?
No, it's not, it's not our role. We're like the Supreme Court, okay? People bring cases to us, we don't, the Supreme Court doesn't go out and, and create cases. They hear cases. They don't create law, they listen to cases and make decisions. We are, as, as Alton said, we are, that, that's our function. We are not here to change the rules, we are here to interpret what they are, and to grant the variance if there is a hardship in the land, period. Not to be, and I agree with Chris, I think that, but we're not the body to do changing it.
It's really Town Plan and Zoning.
Right, if there to be changes, we're not the ones to do it. So, while the idea of a farm is laudable, and it's kind of fun, it's not our, it's not our role to be doing that, so...
We had an application a couple of years ago, where regular Residence A zone, and there was a second dwelling unit in a garage.
Yes.
That had been there for 20-plus years, and they wanted a variance for that second dwelling unit, which we couldn't grant, because that changes zoning.
Yeah.
And they needed to go to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission to ask for change in zoning from one dwelling unit per property to two dwelling units per property now. And, and this probably needs to go to Town Plan and Zoning to...
And actually, the case that you're referring to, there was a lot of good reason why they wanted to do that.
Yes.
You know, but yes, it wasn't, it wasn't the proper venue, yeah.
Okay, so, let's have a motion?
Yes?
Sure.
I move to deny the variance.
Someone have a second?
I'll second it.
Second? Further discussion?
I think really, this has got to go to Town Plan and Zoning.
Yeah.
For, because this, this will set a precedent. And if it goes to Town Plan and Zoning, and they can deal with this in the correct way, it will set a positive precedent for smaller farms in, in town, versus a negative precedent if we were to approve something like this, which isn't restricted to just farming, it's a, a structure, not just a farm structure. So, really, it needs to be defined as a farm structure in our town zoning regulations.
I have to agree with that, yes. Further discussion? All those in favor of denying the application? Oppose, abstain? So, we have other business to take care of this evening.
My apologies, my phone going off, I'm supposed to be carrying another meeting.
Right.
Oh, boy.
Check in to see where I am, and tell them I'm still here.
We have minutes from the last meeting. We could just, for those of us that were here, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Comments, corrections?
Who was at the last meeting?
You were here.
Okay.
I was here, Chris was here.
One, one, one correction.
It was not, right?
Okay, the motion was moved by me, but it was seconded by Mr. Heinz, not Mr. Hayes.
Right.
But Mr. Hayes wasn't here that night.
Right.
Okay, but that's just a typo.
No, we need to, we need to...
There was another, another Mr. Hayes, last page, approval of the board dates.
We will fix that.
Okay.
Great. Further discussion? All those in favor? All right?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second? All those in favor?
All right.